Since everyone is here, and I have 6:30, let's get started.
Okay. From the first is the continuation of the impaired driving program. I don't know if Jim wants to speak about it or not. The program we joined about a year ago.
The impaired driving?
The DUI, impaired driving. We have, well actually this year, last year was $35,000. They seem to be very satisfied with the work, and they're giving $40,000 this year.
Chief, do you want to add anything?
No, it's just working out very well, the checkpoints, everybody that is working, that is keeping up with the training and everything, which is a plus right there. They're keeping up to date with all the current laws and what have you.
Okay.
Yeah, the state's really happy with us, happy with the programs in this.
Is this a motion or a resolution, or what is this?
It's going to be a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, they gave us a form in.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, the next is just, it'll be a motion, but it's Fourth of July parade, waiver of liability we do every year for, Fourth of July parade. I have a copy of it there from Carol.
Do we do a resolution every year so we can just do the same one?
Yeah.
Resolution or a motion?
I'm sorry, that's a motion.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, since it's an agreement, we've been doing a resolution by the Fourth.
Yeah. And next is the, we need to award the bid for the fire station roof. You see I've added, I've included on here the three bids, and Kudnikowski was significantly, well, a nice portion lower than the other two, in the ballpark of lower.
This company's six, right?
Right, yeah, put it down below, the truck company, our company's six on whatever. Their roof is in pretty bad shape, so. And it's actually, this is in the budget. It's budgeted, I think, for 75, so we're below the budget.
Okay.
Next is the conditioning award, traditional awarding.
Excuse me one minute, that's a resolution too? Awarding the bid or not?
Yeah.
Would that be a motion? We can do it as a motion item, I'll see what's.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's $68,000.
Sometimes the companies like to have it as a resolution so they have the authorization.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did that, yeah.
Yeah.
Next is, Jim again with the conditional awarding of a police office position. Do you want to speak to that more?
The list has been certified, the top three candidates will be interviewed. I have interviews scheduled, two on Wednesday, one on Thursday, and I will have a name to submit to council. Unfortunately, I'll be in Haiti the next council meeting.
You'll be in what?
In Haiti.
Oh, you're going back?
Yeah, the next council meeting, so someone else will have to, you know, bring the name to you, but it's down to three, and three are certified, the list is certified, so there you go.
Yeah, it's off the civil service list, so that's the top three.
Right.
All right, next is medical marijuana.
The ordinance which we have all reviewed before and had a hearing previously on, has been advertised appropriately for the next meeting and has been provided to the county for their review, so we're good to go.
We have a special guest here who wishes to speak about the, he's approached me with the, he would like to use part of the city space for the chamber, for the banner split storage, and I'm sure he could speak to a fair idea.
Yeah, that was pretty black and white. We've, with the rearrangement of chamber staff this year, our space in the Potrini Building, this really doesn't make sense, so the event is incurring some expenses for a space that was designed for a staff member to be in full time, and it's not as necessary. However, we do want to be able to purchase for the event in a way that allows us to reuse supplies year over year. So essentially, right now, we're paying for office space to store stuff in, and it would be significantly more cost efficient for the event overall in long term if there was some space here that we could utilize instead.
How much space do you think you need?
Um, right now, I mean, we're not filling a, you know, 10 by 20 room, so it's very storage based at this point.
Wayne, what were you thinking, one of those back rooms kind of?
Well, we have some legal papers we have to get rid of. Once we get rid of those.
What was that look for?
All of Jim's files.
Oh, okay, all of Jim's.
Once we get rid of those boxes, we'll have a good, at least a 10 by, 10 by 10 or 10 by 12 foot area.
Yeah.
You know, the old mirrors office, right over the mirrors office. There's boxes there that have to be taken away.
We could just stack them up taller.
What's in, what's in, you're not ready to part with this, are you?
Well, it would probably take someone like a year to scan all of them at our office, which doesn't really make sense, so it's been better to just, if it wasn't a problem, to leave them in storage here.
Yeah.
Better is rather.
What's in that room?
Um, we have the two desks, we have the.
Yeah, but nobody's using it.
We use it for conferences, that's all.
Yeah.
There's a conference table in there.
I don't have any problem with that, do you guys have a problem with that?
We can make room, we'll make room in there, we'll get some of the boxes rearranged.
How long do you plan on keeping this?
I guess I will look at the records retention policy to see what we have to keep it for how long. Unfortunately, Jim kept everything since like 1981, so it's quite an end.
It'll work out.
I got him like six years.
If he gets elected, don't swear him in until he's.
Tell him he has to go through that, yeah.
That'll work out. As long as you're not looking for a huge area.
The key is just, you know, the first year we ran the event, we bought with the intention
of disposing at the end of the event, and we're really trying to get away from that model because it's just not cost effective. We can buy things that can be used, you know, for five or 10 years, we just don't have, as an organization, we don't have the space to keep it in, and we're trying to avoid incurring, you know, expenses we don't need.
Okay. Thanks guys. Thank you.
All right, I brought it to public safety, more of a parking thing, but I want to bring it up to council. We have some new businesses in town, and they kind of brought up to my attention, as I was saying earlier, that Chef Mark is in town in the Francesca building, and the first five or six days, they got tickets every day. And they realized that they should probably come down and talk to us. And, yeah, so we gave them a permit, but they got charged a $40 permit fee, which is what a non-resident pays. And I just thought about it with two vehicles, and I was thinking the maximum of two, with two vehicles, $80 bucks is a lot for a business, especially when it just moved in and just started up. So my thought was to offer them the resident rate, which is 30, or, and they seemed to be agreeable, and I haven't figured a price yet, but over at the parking garage, you know, we have open spots, they seem to be willing to park over there. If some of the businesses don't want to park, it's too far to walk, but they seem to be comfortable walking there. If council's in agreement, I'll get you a number at the next meeting, but just a reduced fee for over there. And anybody else in any business in town who want to do that, it's one of the parking parking garage.
I would highly recommend that, I think that's a great idea. Those, you know, the parking garage is underutilized, it opens up space in the other lots, it saves people that work, you know, downtown.
And when other businesses have like two or three vehicles, it gets expensive.
Right.
You're talking about commercial vehicles, aren't you? Yeah, well, they're basically vehicles related to the commercial businesses, yeah.
Yeah, but you're not talking about, but you're also talking.
I'm not talking about commercial vehicles necessarily.
No.
Some of the vehicles are related to a business, you know, I'm sure one's a personal car, and then it's a commercial van, so I'm going to take on both of them.
So if I work downtown, and I come in here every day.
And your business, you're a business owner downtown.
Okay.
And you wanted the discount rate for parking, especially specifically the garage in particular, I think we should.
What if you're not the owner, but an employee of the owner, and the owner doesn't pay your parking?
Well, I would think, but limit it to two per business, because you don't want to take, have, you know, a lot of people reducing the rates.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's why I thought about two was a good number. I mean, if the school G wants to have two employees park there, and they want to pay it, and they're willing to walk over, it's utilizing an area that they probably are parking in the alley free.
But if they're underutilizing the garage anyway, why limit it? I mean, better opt in something than nothing?
I'm trying not to pull people from the parking garage, or parking lots. You know, my concern is that if you make it too attractive, you're going to lose revenue in lots.
Right. So I'm thinking. Is the revenue all going to the same place?
Yeah, if you go from a $30 or $40, be, to say, a $25 fee, then the city's losing its money.
Yeah, and I mean, it's the business owners that are making the financial investment, so kind of pulling them a bit of a break, so. I like the idea of two per owner.
I think, see, you know what, it's one situation where if it becomes an issue, we'll hear about it, I guarantee it. But I think two is a nice place to start, if council agrees.
What?
All right, that'll be on the, I'll now get you a number for the garage, I didn't, I'm not sure what the fee is, or that I got a number second. And we have, next is Mr. Zach with the sign ordinance.
Before I start that, back to item six with regard to the Chamber of Commerce, if we're going to have a formal lease agreement, our code book requires that a E5 warrant is, which isn't a problem, just that's procedurally the way to go forward with it. With regard to our sign ordinance, Supreme Court recently entered a case that provided that non-commercial signs have to be regulated on a content neutral basis. So what I'm asking is for a motion at the next meeting that authorize me to research our current ordinance and provide any appropriate updates so that we stay in line with the constitutional requirements.
Say again, the non-commercial signs have to be what?
Content neutral regulations. So you can't say political signs can only be available, or can only be displayed for 30 days, because in order for you to determine what a political sign is, you'd have to look at the content of the sign. So the restrictions that we'd have in our code book would be content neutral, so, you know, instead of a political sign, you have a temporary sign. Temporary sign is defined on the way that it's affixed to the land or materials it's made from, that can be determined without looking at the contents of the message.
Do you think we have signs that violate this?
I know that there's restrictions on, say, political signs, we would have to adjust that. So what'll be on the next agenda, just be a motion authorizing me to move forward with that deal.
He just texted me, he is five minutes out.
Okay, I was going to say, we're missing one person.
He had a thing at the county courthouse.
Yeah, that's a tip.
Yeah.
Transportation.
He said we have time to do this next month, if I don't make it. Well, if you're, well, let me see where he is. Let me just call him so he doesn't wreck while he's driving.
Just going to suggest that. I want to be accessory texting while driving.
You could, Mike, if you want, the council hasn't seen the.
I could talk about it.
Project. You want to pass this around or wait?
Okay, good idea.
You seen it, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Whoever, what's this?
What is it?
That is the project that Jared's working on, and Mike's.
Oh.
The four.
Yeah, if you have time here, I'll go over some of the things with you.
Well, we're looking at there's some other stuff, so now, now we'll wait.
Did you see it? Okay, yeah, that's it, okay.
All right.
This is going to be, let me see how it is.
All right. The bottom is just all of that, everyone's. Okay. All right. Well, this is what Jared and I are working on with the medicine shop over off the top area, that's going to be up where Ligonier Street is, and we discussed this, that we're going to be putting planters in, this area's going to have four planters, three ballers, a bike rack, and two existing trees and everything, so, and that's also where we'll be, we'll be posting that also up there. At the bottom section, what we're planning on doing is the same thing, put on the bench, you know, a planter, some ballers. What, you know, I advised with the parking committee tonight, is possibly making one spot down there a reserved parking spot. Basically, I see cars there parked all the time, there's no parking spot space there, they just pull there and have free parking. This will be a chance for some of the businesses too, to, you know, be able to park there, buy spots, and for a way to make a little bit of revenue on the idea, but that's pretty much what we're doing, and, you know, it's what we talked about before, and as soon as Jared gets all the, all the benches and planters, we'll probably start on that here in a couple weeks.
Hey, that reminds me, whatever happened with the streets that we chipped, and they were supposed to come out and look at them?
Yeah, they did come out and look at them, they came out a couple times, and they did state that there are issues with them, and they will come back in the spring, well, late spring and the summer, whenever they're in this area, and redo some of the bad spots.
And no charge to us?
No charge, that's required. Now, they're not going to do full streets, they're just going to basically do mainly where it's all coming up, is intersections and spots throughout it. You know, it's, they made a determination, the reason why it happened was a couple reasons. One was they didn't mix what's called the EC3M oil with E5, that helps it bond better than kolar wet. It's just the oil base.
Of course.
Yeah, the other thing, they pushed us too late in season last year. You know, we were planning on doing this, I think it was in June, then July, we'd go out and sweep.
And it was their schedule, not ours.
Yeah, and it kept on being pushed and pushed and pushed, and there's a lot of other reasons why, you know, you can throw a handful of reasons. One, if they would have gotten the stone, if it was wet. If the stone was wet, mixed with oil, it's not going to adhere, there's going to be no retention. So, you know, they did come out there, make long story short, they're going to fix the problems that exist out there, not the full streets, just sections that are really bad. You know, in a lot of the streets, it is helping, it does help, it's going to, you know, keep the roads lasting a little bit longer, but, you know, am I a little upset over the fact that it didn't turn out the way it should have done it, when I tarred it for nine years and I had good luck with it?
Well, we'll learn from it, and we'll know next time not to go that, not to let them push us that late in the year, and make sure the mission, E5 would be three years.
Whatever. But, but no, it's, yeah, we're going to have that looked at, and they're going to take care of that for free. They have a two-year warranty on their warranty.
And Mike went to the seminar on the coal patch.
Coal patch, yeah.
This was all the G14, the group we just joined.
Stoffy and I went to last week for Mount Pleasant, and it was a very good, informative seminar, they talked about coal patches guaranteed not to come back out, right?
That's what he said.
So, we, it's a little bit more, but the thing is, if you're not putting back in the same hole, like what we usually do, we always go around to the same places every year with coal patch, and, you know, looking forward, it's a waste of money, you know. If we can find a product, which is products is guaranteed not to come out, a little bit more, they're going to save money in the long run. So, we're going to try it out, but it was good, you know, it was a good seminar, we shared a lot of ideas, learned a lot of different things, so.
Yeah, they were telling us that even, you know, a lot of times with a coal patch, you've got to have the coals go dry.
Yeah.
And they said that they can be wet.
Yeah, you can throw it in with water and it's all wet.
Yeah, and that's amazing.
Stoffy was having shakes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that doesn't happen, you know, so, you know, we're seeing, they did offer some free samples, so, you know, we have, we're going to put it, you know, the other bag down at some other locations. We did try it over the railroad tracks on Floyd Avenue, problem with that is it really didn't stick in there, just because the tracks move, flex so much, you know, so it was just one area where, okay, we're going to try to see what happens, but, you know, I don't think it's going to work good in that application, as we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're right with the bottles, you know, I think it'll work good, so, that's all right.
Okay, thanks. June 9th is Chief Boomer's candlelight vigil. Chief, did you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Yeah, right now, as of today, there's nine clergy that are speaking, get that, there's some special music, it's coming together real well, I have a final bulletin by the end of this week for the itinerary of everything, looking forward to it, so is the ministerium.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, so I won't be there, but I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. And June 10th is the Mr. Rogers Family Day, so encourage everyone to participate in that, hope for good weather for both of these events.
Relate for what?
June 3rd.
Third or fourth.
Relate for life, yeah, June 3rd and 4th, I'll be here for that, so. Anything else, Chief?
Still.
Chief Brazilek, anything going on?
Nothing, gosh. Been quiet.
Were you at that fire unity today?
No, I was at work, we did send a couple units over, number six's air truck went, and number five's engine went over to fill the tankers, so, I don't know. I don't, Pleasant Unity Road, it was over the other side of Whitney there.
I wonder how they got through that intersection, I heard that intersection's a real bear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I know they, all's I can tell you is they, they were having issues with water, they were calling for.
I saw that, yeah. Chief, have things settled down with the bridge, a little bit?
Yeah, you know what, it's been, it's been a little bit better, you still get your occasional crazy that wants to go the wrong way, but that's just, I think it's more or less some people from out of town that come in and want, you know, but I think now people are kind of getting used to navigating and going around, so it's, I don't know, I don't know about Jimmy, I've also been with you, Jim, your people.
It's mostly the trucks, I see, like, I mean, this morning, there was about six citations on the same truck, so I'd assumed he went the wrong way.
[laughing].
The only issue we had was a couple weeks ago, and we were kind of all out when the truck went, come on, went on Jefferson Street, made the right on the depot, and right on the Ligoniers, so.
Yeah.
I think people are getting used to, maybe not getting used to, but they're compensating, is a good word.
I think everybody's being patient, understands what it's about.
They claim that they're going to have it open both ways for the 4th of July, and I think the weather has pretty much cooperated that they're, you know.
Well, I think, they told us, when we met with them, that they were working four 10s, and that they were keeping Fridays open for inclement weather days, so it doesn't seem like they've had a whole lot of bad weather. Do you know anything, Mike?
No, they're pretty much on track, you know, they're.
As they say.
Yeah, as they say, yeah. So, you know, everything's on plan, on schedule, and so, it's good. I was down to where they're building new schools, so that should be moving along, they were mainly waiting on compaction, because of, with all the, everyone knows why, nothing's going on down there, and nothing's being built, they have to have so much of a percentage of a compaction for their base in order to start building on it, and with all the rain, mixing with all the soil, and creating that muddy, that's what the holdup was, so.
Well, I guess they've been taking soil across the street to Lehigh, and they've been sprinting out over there, because I called Chad Ireland, because I said, "What are you doing over there?" And he said, "We're just using their dirt."
Yeah, yeah.
They asked for a place to put their dirt, so we said sure, because it's starting, I thought maybe there was something going on over there that we didn't know about.
Right, so, so that's, should be starting soon, so, you know, because we, we're going to give them a couple roll-off boxes, so, you know, they, we're going to get some business out of that for a roll-off service.
Anybody on council have anything?
You happen to find out about this delayed light?
Yeah, yeah, they can't eliminate that, that left turn, because still people can make the left turn to go down there if they want, even if it's not used all the time. So with Pendots, the way it is, is the way it has to be to stay within code, so.
You mean the left turn on the depot?
Yeah. Because even if it's, with what's going on down there, with the people that are turning left, they still have that option, and you still have to have it available for the traffic to turn down that left from the school, or if they want to loop around and come back up main. I, you know, I can talk to Wayne, maybe we can talk to someone else from Pendots, see if I have another contact maybe to, but, you know, with the.
Yeah, it's going to be hard because of the fact that they don't want to change a lot of things, because the bridge is a temporary, it's only a one-year venture.
Yeah.
So I think it's going to be very hard to change a lot, you know. Hell, we have to try not to go and get them to put their signs, and not have people go down this way, down here.
But I do see the reason, you know, I, when I went there, I think after the last council meeting, he mentioned it to me, or the meeting, and I, you know, checked it out, and just see practical behalf, you know, but.
Yeah, it should be realistic to be on the sensor anyway, but it's not.
All right, Jared, did you catch your breath?
That's my prime.
Okay, you ready?
I'm ready.
You're up, we've been stalling, but we've been getting a lot of good information out, so.
Okay, go ahead, it'll be of use.
You don't have to go back there, because there's no mic on anyways.
All right.
So you can just come up here and talk to us.
All right. Hi, I'm Jared. Now, we have, just running from a meeting in Greensburg, I'm up here now. I have a couple visuals, and we had a meeting, I don't know, two weeks ago, this is not going to be a regurgitation of that meeting, but it's just sort of a couple visuals to give some context. As you guys know, in about.
Take one and pass them around.
Yeah. In about, and we're on this one to start with the area of downtown. So, in about two years, something amazing's happening, as you know, the new traffic lights, the hovercrafts and crosswalks are coming, those are indicated on the middle image with the yellow pins. Obviously, within that is the essence of our core downtown, basically. The, the red is an area that I wanted to propose. Our current lights are metal headlight, highway lights that are antiquated and old, similar to our traffic lights. So the thinking is, with the technology and the cost savings of running LEDs, is to swap them out in the near future, because the contract's going to be up and it's going to make that very easy. I spoke to Wayne about this like 10,000 times. So what I did, it's always been a project that looks to cost over a million dollars, so it didn't seem realistic. So we had, or I had an engineer take a look at something called a photometric analysis. It's basically saying, with where the exact light bulbs are now, if we switch those out and plopped in a brand-new decorative black LED light, the same ones are basically going to get on the new bridge, is that possible? Because if it's not possible, then, you know, I don't think it's realistic based on that price. So the top is, that completed photometric analysis basically shows that where the lights are currently, if we swap them out and put an LED at 14 feet that are cast iron, made it in the USA, that that would meet Pendot standards, and it would of course increase safety drastically, because it's so well lit and everything else. Down below, where the Jeep silhouette is, get a cute little drawing there.
The white silhouette?
The Jeep, with the people. Basically, on the left, if you're looking at it, that's, that's pretty much what the bridge is going to look like. That's a 14-foot pole, okay? So if you flip around, on the top right, we have images of Pittsburgh, but up at night, I cannot understatement on the time to really get into what this does for downtown, it transforms the downtown completely. Even during the day, as you'll see in the middle, with the image of Ceilings Grove, you know, you sort of switch it out for hard lights, and it sort of loses a lot. That's Market Square, and then below is another section of Pittsburgh of a photo I took during a conference a couple weeks ago. Top left was our proposed changes, as directed from some at that initial meeting about two years ago, that our architect, Steve Patricia, put together. Bottom left is basically what it would look like. A Made in America cast iron pole, basically is top of the line. Because of the results of that sort of study, we spearheaded to see if this is possible, that's what the pole would look like. You can put the City of Luttrell logo in the bottom, picture of Wayne's head, what everyone do.
Who's head?
Wayne's.
They took it out, man.
Just a staff. And then, and then the banners, whatever's going on.
Who's that one's hair is falling off?
So, a really nice pole, we were sort of shocked that installed with the installed specs, we were thinking well over 5,000, because we don't have to move anything, installed, it looks like 3,500 roughly a piece. That took that pie in the sky vision down to 250,000, so what we have is, we have a range of grants that we can look at. The main thing from the meeting a couple weeks ago was just to talk about a partnership, LCRP and the city journeying on this together to see what our options are, right? So I wanted to put it on your guys' radar. One coming up is one that you guys have applied for before, the Pendot multi-modal, we know well, our representative, Retraka, had predisposed us that that is a viable option, that is a two-thirds match. That means it's a one-third match, they cover two-thirds, which is not normal, it's usually 50/50.[1794.13] 50-50. So, the total project cost to redo the whole downtown looks like this, right? That's the whole area, it's not in stone, that's a suggestion without breaking the bank.
Are you talking about the red?
The red. So, we're getting the bridge, right? Then you're getting all new curb cuts that we're not paying for, then we're getting all new traffic lights, not paying for. And then, this is the dream that we've always, every time, has always wanted to redo your entire infrastructure in one swoop.
Hey, Wayne.
That's sort of what I'm proposing, and then...
I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, we can go in there.
Not bad.
It's a lot more fun than the old 10-city council meetings. Okay, so going back to that, so, I'm throwing this out there, I'm, so if the total project cost is a quarter million, it's 250,000. You can switch it out, our upfront cost would be around 83,000, okay? So, for conversation purposes, if we apply for this grant, two things. One is, just like you guys did before for those dual grants that we've done for 10 years, if it's the strongest mode, the city becomes the applicant, I do all the grant writing, I'll do the project management, there's no more time to you guys, and I give it to you, and then if you bless it, you hit send, and then you break the, what's that called, that agreement?
Intergovernmental agreement?
Yeah, or the, whatever you did last night. Just change the date, you don't talk about the, you gotta pass the...
The pass-through of the money?
Yeah, or the, whatever your legal document is, I can't remember.
I remember the last grant, it was a resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, okay, okay.
The date started at 6:45, I'm tired. So, for conversation, okay, if you would look to put up, say, 100,000 or 20,000, what I'm saying is of that, possibly, you would actually get your money back really quickly because of the conversion anyway. Running the LED light is about, takes about one-third of electricity, and you also wouldn't be paying for the, basically, you're renting these lights off of Pendot right now, that little fee, I don't know what it is, would go away as well.
Is that right, Wayne?
The trade-off will be, you know, it's gonna be that way when we trade out, trade out all those LEDs, is now the city has to maintain them. Right now, we just, we're paying just a fee, and if the bulb goes out, they maintain them. But, so, I mean, it's gonna happen anyway. When the rest of the LEDs in town, unless the Cobra's gonna be converted to LEDs anyway.
Right.
And so, we'll have to maintain regardless.
You're right.
Yeah, no, it's just a matter, you will say, like Jared said, you will say about a third. That's, I think that's where the rate structure came in, like a third off of your current cost.
And what's our current cost?
Couple hundred thousand a year.
Wow.
Whoa.
But, you know, nicely, that's what you pay by the field, that's the measure.
Yeah, I understand.
And then we gotta, I mean, you know, partnerships, like I said, we do the grant writing, we do the project management, and I'll, so I'll take care of the lion's share of the giving up that other town.
So, first of all, I have a couple questions. One, Wayne, we talked about doing a multimodal grant, or did we already? To do more than ju, did we do two? So, do we have enough to do the paving?
Yeah, we have enough to do the paving, the crosswalks, and the curbs.
Okay, with the two, the two we have.
Right.
So, this would be like the third one.
Right, and a bit of...
And now, and the timing is right.
Good enough.
Yeah, the timing's right because of what we're doing. So, I think what I'm hearing you say is that the cost, we have to come up with, as a community, a total of $83,000.
Correct.
The city's not gonna foot the bill for that, obviously, but I guess my question is, would we be willing and do we have the money to budget into next year to commit maybe 20 grand to that, 'cause then it makes it easier for us to go and grant, fundraise the other 60. That's my question to council.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Say we go ahead and budget 10,000 to 20,000.
Right.
You don't come up with the other 60 or 70.
Right.
Who's the, who's that fallback on?
Well, then, if you didn't, yeah, that's never happened with us, but, yeah.
I can answer that. First of all, the grant, we wouldn't, we wouldn't accept the grant money, because if we got awarded the grant, we would say, "Oops, we're short, we fell short of our match," and we would give the money back.
And what happens, then, when you try to apply for other grants?
Well, it hurts you, but...
It hurts you bad.
Yeah, I mean, but, but, I will tell you this, there's nobody, I, I sit on a couple of different boards, and this, and, and for the history of the 14 years that I've been here, we always managed to find the money.
There's always a what-if there is.
I understand that, but if you, if you play that what-if game, you get nothing accomplished in your community.
Well...
Because, because, let me finish, Jack.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we, we managed to do a lot of things that we wouldn't have done if we played the what-if game. Sometimes in order to, sometimes you gotta take a little bit of risk. However, I don't think that $60,000. And here's the other thing, what, if you're worried about applying for another grant and not getting it, if you're never in a position where you're willing to take that risk, there's no point in applying for a grant. So, it, so it doesn't, so it doesn't matter.
If there's another, Jack, if there's something, if there's another mode, I've talked to every United States attorney, every business owner I've spoken to has wanted this for a number of years, right? I think back in our comprehensive plan in 2010, the plan itself costs $125,000, if not more with the amendment, and it strongly called for this. Our Lloyd Avenue Gateway Plan, it's a $40,000 plan, we're still implementing it, but it also caused, you know, caused for that decorative lighting as well. So, if there's another pocket, I'm open to working with you on, or no, a solution is what I'm saying, a solution is what I'm saying.
I don't have that pocket, Jerry, that's what I'm worried about. I don't like to risk taxpayers' money.
Well, there's zero risk here, because that's a, that's a, I would say it's a very strong hypothetical reach to, of a slippery slope to say, "If we don't get this, then we have been at doomsday because two years down the road."
If we don't get...
I would just, speaking on behalf of our organization, that's never happened to us.
And, and...
I can't speak with any other...
And I guess the point is, if, if we don't get this, if we wouldn't get it, and we wouldn't, so we're not committing, so we're not gonna end up paying the whole $80,000, because we would just say, "We fell short of our, of our goal." And, you know, like I said, it's never happened, but my point is, if you're not willing to take that risk, then you're not gonna apply for any more grants, because you're always gonna run into this possibility that you're gonna apply for the grant and you're gonna, and you're not gonna meet the match. So, but, but we think that we won't have a problem meeting the match. And, so, I think, so, but the grant application needs to be by July, correct? July 31st?
End of, end of July.
July 31st?
Yeah, so, I mean, just to reiterate, I spoke with other city managers who've gone through this, you know, when I told them our utility lines are already buried, which covers the lion's share of the money, he sort of gasped, "Oh, you're 90% there," right?
All right.
And then, so, yeah, I, our reputation is rather strong in the funding community, I just, I do take, you know, I'm just plugging that, that we have been nationally accredited, we've been ranked the third-best program in the state through a lot of people's help, and our finances, we get full audit, it's clean, and we mean our commitment. So, although I do understand what you're saying, in this particular...
I'm gonna talk, I'd like to have the money in place, Jared, before we do this.
Hopefully, in two weeks, I can...
And I understand that that's never happened.
We may be able, we may, I mean, we may know that before we have to file the application, but we may not. And, again, I mean, the problem is, in this kind of an atmosphere, in this kind of world, you never would get anything done if you didn't do it this way, 'cause this is how everybody does it.
I gotta agree with Jack on this, Jared.
Not sure.
If we do not have the money ahead of time to apply for the grant, that would hurt a lot of people.
No, but, no, no...
We're trying to find the department and everything all the time.
Yeah, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't have helped. Look, the problem is, while the issue is, it's, how's it gonna hurt you if you're never gonna be willing to make that commitment? If you're never gonna be willing to make that commitment, then how, how can you apply for grants? And if you're applying for a grant for the fire department, it's gonna be different than the grant that we're applying.
No, it's not. Same grants, grants are grants. You're asking for the federal government for money.
It's not a federal grant?
No.
Well, whose money is that?
State grant.
There's, there's...
State grant, same thing, we get through the same thing, we write for state grants, we write for federal grants and everything, and when you do not use that money per se for what you wanted to, and you apply for that grant, say, "Well, we fell short." Next time you go to write for the grant stuff, they take you and they write.
Well, I don't know, Jack, I don't know this stuff, 'cause it's never happened, okay? We've never had that happen, we've never not found the money, and, again, you're looking at beautification to your downtown, attracting businesses come in, well, what...
No, you're not, Jack, we just went through this, we're not talking 80,000, what do you, what do you mean? It's written right there.
It's written, I do.
The total of the project was 200, a strong estimate was 250,000. We're suggesting to you, was your...
10 to 20,000, you're saying you're gonna come up with 63,000 to 73,000.
Right, we're gonna grant rise, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna raise $60,000.
You just read what I wrote, so that would be correct.
Right.
Not what you said initially.
What I think they're saying, Jared, is if you don't come up with the $63,000, are we on the hook for all 83? And the answer is...
No, the project doesn't go forward.
The project doesn't go forward.
Yeah, and this doesn't help.
I think there's a lot of people...
Well, no, it doesn't help, but you're, we're spending taxpayers' money here.
I think there's a lot, we're not spending more than people. We're spending taxpayers' money when we put a new roof on the parking garage, or on the, on the fire department. I don't, you know, we, but, that's why we budget those things. We're spending taxpayers' money to upgrade and keep the city of Latrobe an attractive place where people wanna live.
And there are a lot of people behind this, so this is not just they're coming up with this plan, there's a lot of people who think this is a positive idea, including Joe Matraka, who I think started telling us about the implications there.
Yeah, and you go back to the downtown, I think, you know, a lot of us, the common point is being pro-business and pro-support of a safe business vibrant downtown. The question is, what do you do to actually attract businesses personally and collectively, right? So, the beautification of this is strongly correlated to attracting businesses, it makes you inherently unique.
And it makes you a tax base?
You know, it's a very...
Yeah.
Jared, you got, I mean, if, at the next meeting, 12, if you make a motion to move forward with the grant, and then by July meeting, Jared needs to kinda come up and say, "These are the people that are gonna pay the 84,000 with the city contribution."
We may not know them.
But, you got, you got, you got...
Maybe closer.
Six weeks, yeah, you got, I mean...
No, Jared, you don't think we'll be closer?
No, I was just trying to, no, yeah, I got you, I got you, I'm listening.
I heard you.
You're good, you're good.
Well, I'm saying, and I'm just saying that basically, I think what happened, and again, it's a suggestion, if Jared comes up with 35,000, he comes back to council and says, "This is what I got." Are you willing to throw it in or not?
Is that enough time?
Um, yeah, I...
I mean, you're gonna have to go by this, but...
The other thing is, did we take a breath? We're just trying to attract businesses to downtown, make it safer, and make it look better. That's, that's the end game here, okay? I think we all agree on that. This was a hypothetical of the image of our core downtown, that we can continue from the new bridge, which we helped design in partnership with you all. It doesn't need to be, that's about 68 lights, it doesn't need to be that big in scope, okay?
That's another thing, too, you can scale it down.
Take a deep breath, maybe you just go from the bridge to New Alexandria, right?
And you do in phases.
The total cost of the project in that instance would be 80,000, that matches 30% of that, okay? So...
Let's choose for the whole project.
Yeah, I mean, you start with that, and you work towards solution. It's a very, this is extremely standard discussion.
So, for the June meeting, we need a resolution.
Yeah, you're gonna require a resolution.
Yeah.
And to move forward with the grant application and see if the city's willing to commit 20,000, and we'll vote on it.
Or even in July, 'cause it's due in July.
Well, no, I'd rather do it in Jan.
Well, you can do the resolution in June and move forward with the, the grant application.
Right.
And then in July, firm off the details of the, what's the contribution, 'cause that's when the grant is actually submitted.
Right.
At that point, you need to, you have to shut up your financing pretty much in place, you know that this person's saying this, and this, you know, you know where the money's coming from. And if you do, at that point, if the city decides they wanna scale the project down, that's the time to scale it down.
I agree with that.
You know what I'm saying?
And our, our $20,000 obligation wouldn't be until the next budget cycle, or even the one after that.
The only, the only time that we're obligated is if we accept the grant.
Right. By what point, like, this budget cycle, or...
The project's gonna be slated for next year.
2019.
2019.
So, we have two years.
Your other ones, yeah, are, are...
It would be, it would happen at the same time, as we're doing everything else.
Right, yeah, and...
Yeah, that, I mean, as far as we can budget that, the Vans, some of these lights are gonna be changed this year regardless, but that doesn't affect the...
And the other thing you gotta remember is the return on your investment here is huge. Figure a third, I mean, just figure a third of, would you say that, even if it's $200,000?
Yeah, $200,000, I don't know what this downtown area...
Yeah, but say, even to say it's, it's $100,000, so you're, you're talking about the savings of $33,000 a year. So, this thing pays itself off in two years.
But weren't you gonna get that anyhow with Pendot?
Well, we're gonna get that, we're gonna get that with, the power company's gonna change those lights, so you will have that, that savings.
Right.